Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good, good, good. Welcome to Sumter County Council's meeting for Tuesday, March 28th. I'd like to call the meeting order. Um, please, would you please give us an invitation? May we all stand and be... May I stand before the pleasure of the meeting?
Let us pray. Our dear county administrator, Martha Chu, as the one whom we live and move and have our being. As we begin this meeting, we invite your presence and ask that you abide with us as we go through our agenda items. We ask your blessings upon everyone under the sound of my voice. We thank you for our county administrator, his staff, and we thank you for all of our community residents who saw fit to come and to see local government in action. We ask that you help us to have clarity of mind and understanding and wisdom as we approach every item on our agenda. And as we finish our evening, we ask that you take everyone home safely to view their families. And, Father, we also ask that you look over this world and bless those who are having problems. Bless those who, uh, have, have had tragedies in the storm. Bless those who are not ones to violence. We ask your, your blessings upon the families of, of the victims and of the perpetrators. Everyone hurts when it comes to things like that. We just ask that you continue to be over us and just change some hearts and minds that things will get better. These are all blessings. We thank you for it and ask in the precious name of our Savior and your Son, Jesus Christ.
Today, we will be led in the presence of leaders by a U.S. Army veteran, Jerry Washington. He served our country from August 1985 to May 1988. He is the commander of American District Post 202 here in Sumter. He currently lives in County Council District 2. Thank you for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under the God, in the God, with liberty and justice for all.
What's up? Minister's speech.
Thank you.
Do you have approval?
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second to approve our agenda? Any questions? Hearing not all available?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve our minutes for the regular meeting. So, we moved the property secretary that we approved our minutes. All in favor, please say aye. On land use matters, Mr. Ruthman RZ, request number 2301. This is a second reading, uh, prior to council taking any action, we will hold a public hearing.
RZ 2301 is at 3221 Camden Highway. The applicant is Mr. Christopher Rathfield, the property owner. He is here tonight to speak on behalf of the request. The request is to rezone three separate parcels. It looks like four when you look at the aerial photography because of how it's subdivided. The total across only 20 acres from residential line to agricultural conservation. The primary address is 3221 Camden Highway. The area is, you highlighted in red, is this little spin of about 20 acres. It's actually, um, four different chunks. You have a piece, if you look at it longer. You have a piece right here that's approximately .65 acres. You have the home site, which is a two acre parcel. You have an eight acre chunk and then the remainder of the 20 acres is the piece right here. There is only one dwelling on all of this property as it's done. It is only residential R9 as is all of the properties surrounding it. Uh, the reason that we're here today with this request is because the applicant would primarily like to replace the existing dwelling on the property with a manufactured home. The house was built in 1938. It requires extensive repairs in order to become safe to live in. There are some issues with it that are beyond, uh, the applicant's means to repair. But the R9 district does allow manufactured homes as a by right use. The only two districts in the county that allow manufactured homes are agricultural conservation with a minimum lot size of one acre and, uh, general residential, which require a lots of significantly smaller lot size of about 6,000 square feet. This is part of a larger land area that's currently zoned, uh, R9. It's right on the edge of the military protection planning area, but it's the area that holds Anchor Hill subdivision. This R9 zoning is kind of a last bestage of, uh, R9 development that, that predates kind of the, the creation of military protection planning area and has been in place since 1999 when we went to countywide zoning. The areas that you see highlighted and green that surround it are actually also zoned agricultural conservation, which is what the applicant's requesting. Uh, this property is in proximity to public water, but there is no existing sewer infrastructure in this part of the county. Anything that's developed on any of this property would have to be served by onsite septic system. Um, that comes into play with this particular property because there's a significant area of mapped wetlands on the property, which is further underlying by the silt soils. Uh, and you'll see a large chunk of this property is in what is classified as a lonely area. That means it's got high clay content. This part of this area of county doesn't actually perk very well, which is one of the reasons why this land wasn't developed when the remeager of the neighborhoods was done. It just doesn't support onsite septic. Realistically, the areas of the property that would be suitable for any sort of septic system or what you see in its beige kind of coloration, this area that you see in green is actually a, more commonly known as a Carolina bay. It's just not of a size and shape that it's been mapped in any of our silt plan layers. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan designation says. In this particular instance, it is a military protection planning area. By and large, the MPA is supportive of rezoning to a district that allows less intense using, less units per acre than the R9 zoning district does. So, the request to go from a 9,000 square foot lot density to a one acre lot density from G or R9 to agricultural conservation is in alignment with the 2040 plan. Somehow dropped that in there to give you a further perspective, the larger area of the MPA is to kind of see where the extent that ends. Kind of not on the periphery, but it's towards the, the center of that edge. By intuition, they recommend approval of this request. It is in alignment with the policies of the 2040 plan. Specifically, the AC district has a one minimum, one acre minimum lot size, which does reduce the amount of density in the area. Um, and there are significant portions of the property that make development impractical, impractical for R9 development. Um, and happy answer to questions that you may have.
Any questions on the group?
I've got one. I know I've had some calls, uh, concerning, and the concern is a trailer park. Is there any possible way that a trailer park could be put in there?
The agricultural conservation district does not allow mobile home parks. In order to develop that property for mobile homes, it would have to be a mobile home subdivision, which means that it would have to be a series of one acre lots. Each of those lots would have to be on a public road, which means someone would have to construct a paved road. All of those lots would have to be able to perk. Uh, the dollars incentive during that just aren't practical. The size and shape of this property does not lend itself to easy and cheap development for manufactured homes. Or any homes.
That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ruthman, any questions? Okay, I'll now declare the public hearing to be open. Anyone wishing to speak to council on this matter, proceed to the podium. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jody Rathfield. I am Chris Rathfield's sister-in-law. Bottom line, if you haul enough dirt in, you can get a property to perk. Can you not?
It's not my area of expertise.
Okay. That's one question I wanted to ask you. Bottom line, we will take a hit property value wise with a mobile home being placed next door to us. When you've worked and paid for a home over a period of years, you do not expect to take a loss on your property value. And I have another question. Who says the house is unrepairable? Has a contractor been called in?
I let the applicant defer to the cost of repairs.
Okay. It's called maintenance and upkeep. Bottom line, when you own the home, you have to upkeep it, and that maintenance is behind it. We are not, I am speaking for my husband also. We do not want to take a financial hit on our property value if a mobile home goes in next door to us. And I don't think anybody does who has worked and paid for a house, knowing they are paying for an investment over a period of time, to take a loss on their property value.
Thank you, Ms. Rathfield.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hey, good evening. My name is Amber Boucher. I am Jody Rathfield's daughter, Johnny Rathfield's stepdaughter, and potential heir to, um, my mom's stepdad's property, which directly neighbors to Mr. Christopher Rathfield. Um, again, I'd just like to reiterate, if I am to inherit something, I would hope that it would be of value later down the line. Um, my next question is, from my understanding, if a mobile home is to replace the current dwelling, is he going to be mandated to tear down this home that's over 100 years old?
If Mr. Rathfield wishes to place it on the two acre property where his house currently sits, in order to get that permit for a manufactured home, he would have to tear down the other dwelling. We only allow one dwelling per parcel of land. There are options with the larger acreage to place on any separate parcel without home remaining, if it's drawn to be rezoned or a portion beyond that two acres to be rezoned.
And so, if the home is already in questionable, um, I guess questionable, um, living conditions right now, if he chooses not to tear down the current dwelling, does it just become desirable and eventually an eyesore to the neighbors?
That's an area that's addressed by county codes, not by the governor.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening. I'm Ricky Demus. Um, I've always got land that's moved directly diagonal to this property. We also have a house living in Geico Hills, which is just right down the road. With me being in Sumter County for let's say a little over 10 years, I've noticed there's an increased amount of crime that's come down through the northeast side of Sumter County. Specifically recently where we had a lot of thefts inside Geico Hills subdivision. I do not wish to have a trailer park or anybody putting a trailer in this area. I've already had to dodge people walking down Old Kenneth Highway in the middle of the night, wearing black clothes, trying to dodge the hitmen because they're walking around where they're not supposed to be at. It's a safety issue. Not only that, this whole land around her, like the lady said, said, will not hurt. That's another issue. And we had all the rain earlier this week. And if anybody was around, I think it's about 2016, 2017, we had a thousand year flood. The whole area was underwater. Now, it brings mosquitoes, that brings insects. We don't need that. Um, please take this into consideration with, um, y'all's district call as far as this property is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rathfield.
Good, good evening. Uh, Brian Davis, I live in Hatfield Estates, General Drive. Um, we bought our house on General Drive over 20 years ago, when the neighborhood was just being developed and we were house number eight out of 50 in the neighborhood. Um, since then, we've paid off our house and are happy there. Uh, we bought that property in that neighborhood because there were no mobile homes anywhere. Uh, neighborhood behind us, um, was already established, brick and mortar houses, uh, diagonal brick and mortar houses, Malagino Hills, brick and mortar houses. The, the greatest fear of the surrounding neighborhoods and communities, you know, Hatfield Estates, Geico Hills, uh, Yang Haven, um, you know, on and on. Everybody that's within half mile of this, um, the, uh, the, the greatest fear is that this would then open the floodgates. This single rezoning may open the floodgates to additional rezoning, uh, somewhere else. Ebenezer Road, um, right across from the Geico Hills, between Hatfield Estates and Geico Hills. It is a large piece of property that I found out today, uh, is not very cost-effective to put mobile homes in there, but still would have potential to. Um, with mobile loans near by property values, uh, usually tend to drop, you know, as has been stated, and mobile communities also see a rise in crime, um, which has already been stated. And, uh, will there ever be more than one home allowed to be put on this property? Um, you know, a two acre parcel here, a one acre parcel there, you know, you subdivide the 20 into, you know, 20, you know, now that you can put other mobile homes in. And also, as stated, you bring in enough dirt, you can elevate the property high enough, you can perk it, you know, you bring in the right soil and everything else. Um, I've seen some crazy stuff here in South Carolina in 20 years. I'm not originally from here, but, uh, it's interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Are you ready for a response from the applicant?
Yes.
My name is Everett Morris, I'm attorney here in Sumter. I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Rathfield, partly because of his voice. So, he is having a little bit of trouble today with his voice, and he's asked me to come and speak on his behalf. Mostly what I've heard is speculation on property value, but I don't know if anybody has actually put forth, this is what my house is worth, this is what it's going to be worth if a manufactured home is placed in proximity to my home. Second issue that was brought up, the existing structure. Anybody who's been, um, by this particular multi-parcel land, you're not able to see the current existing structure from the road. It's set back, and there are trees and, and other things that prevent you from actually seeing the front of the current structure. So, the issue of, is the current structure going to be, to remain? That should be not an issue because the current structure is not visible from the road. You have to actually go down a several hundred yard driveway to actually see the structure. Like to just note that, that the zoning commission has approved this and/or recommended the approval. It's ultimately up to you as the county council to approve this. There's speculation about the number of additional manufactured homes that might be able to be put out there. Presentation of the representative of the zoning committee has said, that's not practical based on your own zoning regulations. You are going from a higher use to a lower use. There's been speculation about bringing dirt, well, what wasn't addressed. Not only would the dirt need to be present to make it a multi-unit development, it would also require engineering drawings, presentation of new roadways that must be put in. It's not practical to do that. Mr. Rathfield is simply asking that you give him the ability, let's say, a single structure in, on his parcel and allow him to continue to live there without having to spend excessive amount of money to bring the current residents there up to a more habitable, uh, condition. We thank you for your, for your time for us to address you. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Um, my name is Danielle Waffen. We actually bought a house, um, the second store down from Mr. Rathfield's property about two years ago, a year and a half ago. I grew up three minutes from that property my entire life, and that property used to be something beautiful to marvel on as I drove past. The fields were clear, there were horses, everything like that. I moved away and came back and noticed a lot of trees overgrown. It was kind of sad. I figured it was just the older couple couldn't maintain it anymore. I'm not really sure how that story goes, but, um, I will say that you can definitely see the property and the home from the road now because we've been watching it. We drive past it every day. There's been tractors out there tearing down trees, and dirt's already on the property. So, I don't know if you have the money to do all that and stuff like clear everything, clean it up, then I don't understand why you can't fix the house. We bought, our house is 1950. I understand what the repairs cost to fix it, but it is doable if you can buy a new mobile home and clear the land. So, I guess I'm confused because I don't see how it's cost-effective either to do it that way.
My name's Charles, and I live in Hatfield Estates. I just have one question. Um, if the one lot is the only buildable one, why is it 20 acres of, 20 acres? Why not just one lot?
It's what was applied for, so you could certainly do a lesser amount. You'd need a minimum of two acres, so it wouldn't be spot settling. Um, given the demolition of the existing house is the issue, and I would recommend that two acres plus some additional portion of the adjacent property in order to allow a spot where the home could go, not on that main two acre parcel. But that's certainly an option, and the request was submitted by the applicant for all three tracts of land in the home.
Anyone else wishing to speak for, uh, against this rezoning request? Seeing around the public hearing portion, this meeting is closed. Pleasure, counsel.
Um, I'm ready. Just wanted to ask one question of Mr. Ruthman. Um, thank you, Mr. Ruthman. Would, um, and, and, um, that question posed by the gentleman just now concerning the two acres, um, as opposed to rezoning the whole 20 acres, um, would that request cause, would it, will it change the request if we were to consider that? The, the request that is before us, um, would, would we be able to do that?
It's certainly the pleasure of counsel to rezone a lesser portion of the property than was fully asked for. Uh, the property was advertised for all three tracts of land. Uh, with this public hearing, you would have met the public comment requirement to do a lesser amount than what has originally been asked. I did speak with Mr. Rathfield yesterday, and forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn. He is open to a lesser amount of acreage than what was originally applied for. Uh, in our discussions yesterday, the primary objective was just to be able to get to a place where he could put, I mean, one manufactured home somewhere on the property, um, so that he could move out of the house.
Okay, and so my next question would be, um, if, if this, if that particular parcel is the one that he would be willing to accept the rezoning, um, when, when we saw the picture, um, I didn't see any other dwellings near that or in that picture, um, and, but then hearing the public comments, it seems like that particular dwelling is near, they are neighbors to that particular...
There, there is a dwelling here on this property to the south. Mr. Rathfield's current home is here, and if you can, he kind of zoomed out view. This is Mr. Rathfield's property. You have homes back here and homes right here, and you have, um, a home down here and across the street here. I did not recall seeing any homes on his house across the street. If there are, they're not immediately against the road. But there's an interspersed pocket of dwellings in this area. Um, it looks like, from what I saw in the aerial imagery, and you can't see it in this particular, um, one because it's too far out or too close, but kind of underneath this aerial map symbol, uh, it looks like there's either an RV or a small manufactured home on that property already, kind of buried in the woods. And then there are some other homes up here. Um, this part of Camden Highway, this side is kind of, doesn't have as much population density. It has the same issues with the soil parking over here you have up here. And so, uh, this property also has the same issue in that, um, it was planned at one point many, many years ago to be a residential subdivision. They carved off what they could and then they stopped. Um, so for the same reasons, the soil's just not really great in here. It's a very, it's a lump. I may have given you more information.
No, that's good. It's great information. I just have one more question. Um, there was also, um, a, some mentioning of visibility, and I just wanted to know, um, is there enough tree buffering, um, to, um, maybe for aesthetic purposes, um, imposing, you know, the, the visual part of it upon...
I, I haven't physically driven out and looked at that property today, but I will tell you that the zoning and development standards ordinance does not require landscape buffering for a single solitary dwelling. Um, and, and as part of the rezoning process, it's not something that, that is a state of southern Carolina making conditions.
And I'm, I'm not asking for, for you all to, to...
Yeah. I'm really not, I'm really not certain. Um, it, it depends on the property, on where on the property you would ultimately end up putting that manufactured home. I will tell you that the ordinance would require it to be placed parallel to the road so that the long front part of the home, not a shop in the south, the long front part of the home would be facing the road, more of an ranch-style layout, so it couldn't be put in, um, perpendicular to the road so that you wouldn't just be seeing the end cap of the house, you would actually be seeing the front garden of the back of the house behind, right behind the house.
Ms. Ruthman, can you go back to that area of the, that? From where that yellow line is, that particular box next to what looks like a home, that's got to be at least eight to 10 acres above or right there.
This, this piece on this side, this piece alone, is eight acres. This tiny little chunk at the side that's on the, uh, the left side of the driveway is .65 acres. This is two acres, so 20 minus two, 18, minus eight, 10. So, this other piece is about nine acres, so nine plus eight, you've got about 17 acres between this parcel and this parcel.
Nine point eight two acres, that buffer?
Yeah.
That's a pretty big buffer.
Yeah, it's naturally, uh, naturally buffered.
I believe that there has been some timbering done on that property recently, as across most of Sumter County, may have noticed in the last three or four years, lots of trees have been cut down because planted pine trees have come to maturity. Um, so there may not be as much tree buffer here at this moment as there was at one time, but it is a pretty significant reduction. the long front part of the home, not a shop in the south, the long front part of the home would be facing the road more in a ranch style layout, so it couldn't be put in perpendicular to the road so that you wouldn't just be seeing the end cap of the house. You would actually be seeing the front garden of the back of the house behind, right behind the house.
Ms. Ruthman, can you go back to that area of the, that, from where that yellow line is, that particular box next to what looks like a home, that's got to be at least eight to 10 acres above or right there.
This, this piece on this side, this piece alone is eight acres. This tiny little chunk at the side that's on the left side of the driveway is .65 acres. This is two acres, so 20 minus 2, 18, minus 8, 10. So, this other piece is about nine acres, so nine plus eight, you've got about 17 acres between this parcel and this parcel.
Nine point eight, two acres. That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big buffer.
Yeah, it's naturally, naturally buffered.
I believe that there has been some timbering done on that property recently as across most of Center County, may have noticed in the last three or four years, lots of trees have been cut down because planted pine trees have come to maturity. So, there may not be as much tree buffer here at this moment as there was at one time, but it is a pretty significant difference.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I would like to defer second reading and give the applicant an opportunity to zone maybe the two acres. I think everybody's really uncomfortable with the whole 20. Yeah, the two parcels. Excuse me, let's see if there's, uh, if we can, I mean, we can do that.
We said that we were able to do that.
Yeah. I think the thing that most of them are uncomfortable with is this whole thing being a federal part of the market, bringing in enough dirt to where you could actually, even though I don't think it's that convenient, there is weapons in there.
It is indicated on the national wetlands inventory, whether it's jurisdictional or not, would have to be determined.
But anyway, that would be my thought is to defer, give the applicant an opportunity to figure this, this out where he can just zero in where he wants that wonderful, um, mobile home to go and figure out how we can work that in. If that's, that's all right.
A second. That would have to be surveyed out, recorded.
Not necessarily. We can work with, the plan staff can work with him to see what perimeters he currently has to try and come back with an alternate proposal at the next meeting.
But it can't, it can't kill it just rezon the two acres, but that wouldn't resolve anything.
You could just rezon the two acre home site, but that would be with the understanding that Mr. Raffield would have to tear the house down in order to place a manufactured home on the property. My understanding at the moment that there is not the financial wherewithal to both place a new home receptive and tear down the existing dwelling. That dwelling is about, is on the assessments record, if I read it correctly, because there's got to be set up that looked like it was about 2,400 square feet. And it looks like in the aerial photo, it might be a two-story house, so there's some expense involved in that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to defer. Any discussion?
Obviously, it's in my district. And of course, you know, I have a big heart for homesites. You know, I, I'd like to see compromises, you know, with every, you know, a middle ground where, you know, I know that everybody's not going to be 100% pleased. But of course, I, I have compassion for the applicant because he'd like to have a place to live and, and the current dwelling is not livable according to what we're hearing. And then, of course, I understand the financial implications and, of course, the appearances and everything, and I just want, you know, the public to know that. And so, when, when this, you know, I don't know what the vote is going to be, but I'm kind of feeling my colleagues, that that's, that we're going to support that referral. But when it comes back before us, I'm hoping that everyone will have had the opportunity to talk about it and, and just maybe come to us on a unified front with a good compromise so that everyone, it may not be completely happy, but bring to us something that we can approve unanimously, hopefully. Thank you. I just wanted to say that.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, if I'm here right, what you're saying is that if we did come back and say rezoned two acres, period, that it's going to put a financial burden on the individual, is he going to have to tear down another section?
It depends on which two acres. If you do the two acre home site, then that is my understanding.
So, the two acres cannot be close to that one that's there?
If you would look, Mr. May, at the driveway and that portion to the right of that driveway, so I came over there and just cut one acre over there, that would suffice, right?
There are a multitude of options that we can work with the applicant on discussing.
Okay, and that would, if, if we did that, that leaves it where it's just one mobile home that you got there.
It must be manufactured home.
Maybe. Uh, at that point, would be a second.
It, it depends on how that's configured. At worst case scenario, at some point it could be two, but definitely with what we're discussing, it would be one.
If you just rezoned one acre?
You cannot rezon just one acre under our ordinance by the spot zoning. You have to rezon a minimum of two.
Mr. Washington. So, is there a space to rezon two acres within this development, this, with the wetlands? Is there another?
There, there are a multitude of options that we can.
Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, as you know, I am generally in favor of protecting community unity. And in our conversation, we've not determined whether or not placing one manufactured home or two manufactured home will have any financial impact on the other homes around it. And I would think that that would be an important variable for us to know before we take a vote on that. So, if the intent is to defer and come back, then that absolutely should be a part of the equation, what effect financially it will have on the homes around it. That's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The only other assessment, some type of assessment done is to give that type of facility a place there, what in fact would it have on surrounding homes?
That is beyond my professional expertise.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to defer. All in favor?
When you will come back with.
We'll advise, expect support.
And, and the community and give.
Mr. Chairman, is there a timeframe on the department?
I'm sure he wants to get in his home as quick as he can, so I would, like, if he's going to want, they're still.
And Ms. Ruthman said that there were some options, and of course, now she does have that, that professional expertise to give them those options.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution number 2303.
Mr. Chairman, as you counsel, as you know, the opioid litigation, the national opioid litigation continues to a lot of plaintiffs, a lot of defendants. Three of the defendants have offered to sell with the national plaintiffs, all of the plaintiffs across the United States. And they are Tiva and Allergan, who are manufacturers, and CBS, Wal-Mart, who are retail distributors. And the purpose of this resolution is to acknowledge terms of those settlements and to, and to accept the settlements and participate in the national settlement agreements, the purpose of the resolution.
We're going to approve this. We've got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2303. Anybody in favor? All in. The fiscal tax and property committee did this afternoon at 5:30. All members were present. We went into an executive session to discuss two items. One had to do with contractual matter. One was a personnel issue. No action was taken on any of those. We came out of executive session. We had a discussion concerning our library, on making the library a part of county system. And we also come with a motion and a second to purchase a fire truck and two ambulances using the auto funds. So, we got a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a fire truck and two ambulances using our auto funds. All in favor? All in. Important counsel members on other meetings, trainings, and our conferences. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report that on last Thursday, the Wedgeville community hosted a community meeting regarding the FJ Delayne Elementary School. I just want to report to counsel that there were over 200 residents at the meeting and that residents feel very strongly about maintaining the school and the community's possession for use by the community. And I just share that with counsel as information, and there will be more to come. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Anyone else?
On Saturday, we had our litter pickup for what we call the Quadrant Number Two. That's part of the county's litter program, and we had 100% participation from all the schools in that area designated as, uh, the two. And we've had several industries there as, as well. This was just a kickoff. There will be reports hopefully in the item on a weekly basis as we move forward, the month of April, on all of the little pickup that will be taking place in Quadrant Number Two, and there'll be more to come. Keep an eye out in the item for what's going on in the community to try to clean it up.
Mr. Chairman, I will say they're quite busy on Thomasville Highway. A lot of head army out there.
I think that had to do with the DOT. They have received some funds from the state that allow them to pick up trash prior to cutting. As you know, when the DOT cuts, they cut up the trash as well, and that makes it look a thousand times worse than it was before they cut it. But now they've got funds and they seem to be using it as a little data because there must have been 40 people out there picking up trash, and that's prior to that particular area being cut by the DOT.
Mr. Chairman, and you may want to elaborate on this for those who don't know, but this council has decided to also engage in a very aggressive way, particularly around recycling centers. We'll be contracting with businesses, and we'll determine whether it's a one-mile radius, three-mile radius, or five-mile radius for those companies to come in and collect that trash near recycling centers because that's where a great deal of the trash is. So, I just don't want the county to be left out of that equation as we're talking about DOT because we're really doing some new things in terms of addressing a little issue as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I was there Saturday. The event on the litter was at the Civic Center in Sumter. And I don't know how many schools were there, but it was just, it was really well attended. Children were there, lots of events for the children. They had a competition on a, they call it, well, they come over, poster competition too, but they had a cheerleading competition, and they had to come up with a cheer about litter, and it was fantastic. Now, hopefully, we'll have that on our website at some point, but we need to go to our website and look at all of what we're doing with the litter. It's all spelled out. Jehovah does a great job with that on our website.
Can you give us that chair? Can you do that chair for us?
Let's see if we can step on it.
Oh, step on it. Mr. Chairman, we're in four week clubs, and I know litter is a very serious problem. So, but I'm, I'm really not convinced that people in Sumter really take litter as being a problem. There are people that litter. I was, I experienced something the other day coming from Kershaw County. There was these plating company moving trailers down to the place called Golden Arrow. It used to be Golden Arrow. When they left Kershaw County, they got on the highway. They went through River, and from that point on, they littered the highway for 15 miles. They had debris flying out of one of those trails that was like snow, heavy snow, and they littered that. I called security, 911, and talked to them and said, hey, you know, there's this truck out there. But this guy who was following this big trailer, that trailer, in a truck, he didn't have the respect to say, hey, let's stop and fix this part of the half the trail where the material came off that allowed this stuff to pile all through the highway. To me, I said, this company should be fined to the force. But if we don't take litter seriously, we would have people just like that who will defeat everything we are trying to do to clean up. So, we need to put more pressure and fines on people that litter because if we don't, we're just having people out there picking up garbage, picking up garbage, and like you said, we pick it up and they come back a week or so later and it's all filtered up again, like they just wasted their time. But I was really, really upset when I saw this guy, this trailer, three of them, block the whole road right down the center of the road and litter the highway for 15 miles. Mr. Chairman. And I don't know what the law enforcement did, what did they do? I don't know. But we called, we called twice and reported, and nothing was done. Nobody intercepted them, and they just continued down the highway, littered. It was a shame. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the counsel's comments, and I'll remind counsel that at our last council meeting in committee, Mr. Eaton raised that same point, and we talked about fining those trucks and requiring them to cover their vehicles and talk, talked about hefty fines, which I am in favor of. And, and that's something that we need to continue to explore because it gets people's attention. And so, I just want to remind counsel and thank Mr. Bates for his comments that that's something Mr. Eaton brought, Mr. Eaton's brought up. We probably need to revisit that, is my comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, do you have an opportunity for the question?
No. Not the reports.
Council members, the mayor's prayer, right here is the main report. Also, in your packet is Sheriff Dennis's sheriff's office report. The chamber will be having two events coming up if you want to be interested in attending. And on April the 19th, one is called the State of Health here in Sumter. And last but not least, the Southland Association of Counties Annual Conference will be held in Wild Dunes on Monday, July 31st. You all have been registered for classes, and Mr. Washington will be graduating on Level One. And the other council members who have registered, you were several, several class, just one class, not two. One. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Nixon.
Mr. Chairman, counsel, good evening. And first to address the gentleman, I have a question. If you'll be with me after the meeting, I'll try to answer any questions. I'll try to answer any question I have related to litter.
It was.
Okay, well, we can do it after the meeting, thank you. I would like to quickly follow up on, on litter quadrant effort and take this opportunity to publicly thank the school district, the superintendent and his staff. They were, as council leaders, they have really taken this on and certainly proud of what they're doing. A hundred percent participation in the first quadrant effort and now a hundred percent participation in the second quadrant effort, two including private schools which were in both quadrants. So we're excited about those efforts and certainly looking forward to the things that they're going to accomplish, the activities they're going to accomplish over the month of April. So the way we've got it set up is we had a kickoff, that was last weekend, but now over the whole entire month of April, there'll be different efforts in this quadrant two to focus our attention in specific areas. I'd like to thank Shelby for the item's participation. We've had a great conversation with Kayla and the rest of the staff to make sure that the public, we're going to make, again, a great effort to inform the public of all these activities that are going on. We know because we deal with this on a regular basis what's going on, but we also realize that the public doesn't easily see those things. So hopefully we can turn a light to that, utilize the resources from the item, not only the print media, but I think some of the social medias. And I look forward to working with them on that particular effort. But I would also mention the courts. I believe there was a court, was it yesterday morning, Joe? And I don't know, Shelby, were you able to attend that? But we were, there was a court session yesterday morning on all litter violations. How many cases were there? I don't hate to put you on the spot, but wanted to prove the point that there are some things going on.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, there were seven or eight people in court and Mr. McQuaid presented cases. They were facing five hundred dollar fines. They all took two hundred fifty dollar fine, eight hours of community service. If they don't complete the eight hours, they get a five hundred dollar fine and possible jail time.
So those are individuals. And you mentioned the trucks, yes, there's a whole effort trying to address these different carriers around the community because we do recognize that's where a great deal of the volume of trash is coming from. So there's a conscious effort to work with that. There was another point I wanted to make in regards to the conversation, oh, industries. So one of the things we're moving in into April is we're going to focus on industries and what they do in industrial parks. Just so happens in quadrant two, the largest industrial park, a lot of the industrial parks located in that quadrant. So we are working closely with some of the plant managers out there, being creative on how we engage and involve them. But Chairman and I were actually at a development board meeting last Thursday and heard something that I, I quite honestly didn't know that I would hear, at least in my tenure. He was, he had a potential new industry visiting our community like we do on many occasions. So they take them around the community, show them what we have to offer. On this particular case, they started out downtown, they ended up going out to show them what we're doing downtown, showing them what was happening in Central Carolina about workforce development. Then went over to the manufacturing facility on Broad Street. Then they went out Wides Drive, went out to Patriot Park, kind of showed them the new parks, Patriot and Palmetto, and then came back into the community. And one of the things they said immediately was, wow, this is one of the cleanest communities we've ever been. So yeah, imagine our fallout surprise. But I say that because obviously we're smart enough to know to tell, show which routes to go on, right? So I'm not hiding that fact, we knew which route we wanted to show them. But I also will say this, I'm not even sure five or 10 years ago, we even had that route to show them. So we are making progress in our community, we really are. But it's not something that we as government officials or our workforce, city or county or state that has had the resources enough to clean up the entire community. It's going to take the entire community, the citizens of our community, take it as seriously enough to say enough is enough and do what we can do together. So that's what our role is, to build that cohesive environment, to change the culture in our community that says litter is not acceptable. And that's what we're working towards. So council, thank y'all for making this a positive initiative. We did mention that, you know, council in last year's budget actually appropriated one mill a tax, just over three hundred thousand dollars just for litter. And that's never been done. So there are things happening. We look forward to working with our other partners in the community. Council, thank y'all for your continued support and look for positive things. Shelby, it's on you now, so you've got to let the public know what we're doing. We're excited about this opportunity. You work closely with Joe, working with the city, and let's show the community what we can do together. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Administrator, we had a discussion at one of the meetings about people that were being fined and that we were going to publish that in the item. Were these names of people published in item, fines?
We, we actually have those published on our website. There's some information, but we are, we have had a conversation with the sheriff. We're not at the point where we're ready to publish names or faces of these individuals because there's a lot of the serious crime, violent crimes that we don't publish that kind of information. So it's going to look a little bad if we pick out litter and say, oh, we only publish these and that. Now say that, say that Joe has reached out to some of these folks that have done the community service pickup. They have agreed to be filmed and I guess it's a video, as long as their face is not shown. So we're showing that we're out there doing things with it. They also have the new vest that we have, so that's on full display. So the answer to your question directly, no, we're not publishing their names and photographs. But we are working with them to make sure that people, we get the information out of it. That is a part of the process, is community service. Address it, Joe, you want to add to that?
Yes, sir. Just had quickly, I think it was three weeks ago, there was eight or nine folks out there doing community service along Ranier Boulevard, which is a problem area. And picked up, ran around five hundred pounds of litter, couple of tires. That was there, yes, sir.
Based on some conversations that I've had with our litter officer and other staff members, these folks are very humble and very apologetic and recognize the error of their ways. I don't, based on what I'm hearing, these folks won't be doing that again, certainly not at the level of the aid finals expressed in the past. So hopefully it'll be positive, Mr. Bay. We'll, we'll continue to follow that, but we're not quite ready to put their pictures up on the marquee or put them up on these banners.
So we don't want to pay the same litter bugs every month, huh?
Not, not there yet, sir. We're going to take this approach and see if we can get some positive results.
Okay, coming down to the portion of our agenda for both comment. Anyone desiring to speak are limited to no more than three minutes. Comments can be made through the chairman. And now to clear the public comment portion of our agenda, open. Who wishes to speak to council for maximum of three minutes? Please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing none in public comment, portion is closed for adjournments. Second, we move to process segment that we do in these discussions. We are adjourned.